With us this evening is Reverend Sally Schistler from Christ Episcopal Church to do their invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If y'all would stand please. And fellows, remove your hats. Thank you.
The prayer that I'm gonna offer tonight is a very old one. It's probably, I don't know, hundreds of years old. It's from the Episcopal Book of Common Prayer and it's called "For Sound Government." Let us pray. O Lord, our governor bless the leaders of our land, that we may be a people at peace among ourselves, and a blessing to other nations of the earth. To the president and members of the cabinet, to governors of states, mayors of cities, and to all in administrative authority, grant wisdom and grace in the exercise of their duties. To senators and representatives, and those who make our laws in states, cities and towns, give courage, wisdom and foresight to provide for the needs of all our people, and to fulfill our obligations in the community of nations. To the judges and officers of the courts, give understanding and integrity, that human rights may be safeguarded and justice served. And finally, teach our people to rely on your strength and to accept their responsibilities to their fellow citizens, that they may elect trustworthy leaders and make wise decisions for the well-being of our society. That we may serve you faithfully in our generation and honor your holy name. For yours is the kingdom, O Lord, and you are exalted as head above all. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
We have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call please.
Cleary.
Here.
Haney.
Here.
Harvey.
Here.
Pop.
Here.
Klein.
Here.
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 Chris.
Next, we have the regular council meeting minutes of July 8, 2021, and the Finance Committee meeting minutes of July 8, 2021. Are there any errors, omissions, additions to those minutes? Hearing none, those minutes will stand approved. Next, we have audience participation. And with us this evening, we have some special guests from the Ironton Little League, the Ironton Senior League State Champions. Manager Tim Aldridge. Tim, if you'd come forward, please, and introduce your coach with you and any of the players that are here with you. And when he calls your name, if you don't mind to step up, the mayor is gonna present you all a proclamation after you're done introducing them. Congratulations, Tim.
Thank you. Coach is new manager. We have here with us Brady Mager, Tommy Sheridan, and Mark Hodges, Ryan Jackson, Brandon McKenzie, and Clay Porter, back one went blank. I've seen him for two of them.
Mayor. Yeah, you guys come on up. Fill in right here. You guys fill in right there behind. He's gonna hand you something, so you might want to stand up. Ready? We all here? All right. This evening, we're gonna make a proclamation proclaiming Wednesday, July 14, 2021, as Ironton Senior League State Champs Day in the city of Ironton. Whereas it is with great pleasure, as the mayor of Ironton, state of Ohio, to recognize and honor outstanding achievements in the Ironton Senior League team defeated, oh man. PYMA? PYMA? PYMA, that's what I thought. PYMA Tuning area, nine to five on July 10, went undefeated in the state tournament, beating Fairborn 11 to 9 in the semifinals, and Jefferson Ashdabula 20 to 9 in the state championship game on July 14. And head coach Tim Aldridge led the 2021 Ironton Senior League to a winning season of 6-0. We recognize Brady Mettinger, Chadon Kearns, Tommy Sheridan, Mark Hodges, Isaac Cox, Brandon McKenzie, Drew Brown, Maddox Vass, Ben Sloan, Tanner Patrick, Ryan Jackson, and Clay Porter. The city of Ironton is proud of the dedication and determination this team displayed during the 2021 Senior League season. So now therefore, I, Sam Cramblet, mayor of Ironton, Ohio, do hereby proclaim July 14, 2021, as Ironton Senior League State Champs Day. Was Maria the official photographer?
Yes.
Okay. I figured. Thank you, gentlemen. Congratulations. John, Sam, I know you guys both wanna address council. Feel free. Draw straws or flip a coin.
First thing is that you all have received copies of the June financials at your workstations. Those will need to be approved if you seek that to do so. Another thing that I have that shows you, we did receive the ARCA funds. This is on this sheet. We received about half of what we thought our allocation was going to be, is $551,619.08. So those monies have been deposited. We do have those funds. Our 2020 audit is still in final review. There were a couple of questions that the auditors had yesterday. They were even in yesterday, just doing a little cursory review, which went very smoothly. Wanted to give you an update. I've told you before that income tax collections and water collections are my leading indicators for revenues within the city. And we are up somewhat on both of them from where we were 2020. However, it is almost kind of a false positive because there were no shut offs in water up until July. Income tax payments were postponed until July, so as the months go on, I will continue doing that monitoring, which I do on a daily basis. So we will know the collections, once again, the utility collections, which includes a multitude of funds that are on the utility bill. So I will continue letting you know how that, how we are progressing with where we were in 2020. I spoke to Mike Pemberton last, well, yesterday, day four, and I asked him about Pump Station 6, which is one of our big items that we had on the flood improvement fund. That project, the install, is supposed to happen in October, is what he has been told. And that hopefully, we will see that happening in October. We have had that purchase order in come for quite some time. Be glad to answer any questions.
Mike.
Looking through the June budget, I saw that the overtime in the police department was almost 14% over where we were last time, this year, this time last year. Is that a major concern?
Yes, it is a concern. However, we've known about that. Chief Wagner's given us several updates about being down police officers. It's one of those items that, one of those extraordinary items that we talk about that you really can't foresee. But I think that you're getting close to full staffing again.
We're working it. We just hired one. We're doing an interview on another one. They've been too short for several months. And I have an officer that had a serious injury who's been on life duty for almost four months. So we're now three road officers. And we've replaced one. He was in training last week, so right now, we're now two officers on the road.
So yes, that does concern me. I feel comfortable in telling you that there will need to be a budget amendment for police overtime due to those reasons. Anything else?
Bob. Question for Pam. You said, well, got injured on their life duty. Are they still coming to work every day and put their hours in?
Yes. They just can't walk the road. That officer's been working evidence and we're been working with the detective division. Of course, we always have a lot of overtime in the summertime. We have a lot of older members in our department that have a lot of weeks vacation.
Sure.
That's just something that happens every year. And people are not wanting to do police work. We're scraping everyone, trying to get candidates to come and apply. This time, we had two apply, and I've got two opening.
The final thing that I would like to mention is that 2021 is almost as odd a year as 2020 was in the fact that you're well aware that there's 26 pay periods in a year. We can generally break that down and say, the first half of the year will have 13 pay periods. The second half of the year will have 13 pay periods. This year's not happening that way. This year, the first six months had 12 pay periods. The last six months will have 14 pay periods, so it's almost like another pay on top of that. So just wanted to let you know that there may be some adjustments. Right now, things look pretty good, with the exception, as Mr. Pierce pointed out, some of the overtime, and it's generally due to having short staff.
John. So I was just told by the mayor that you need a budget amendment soon at a finance committee meeting. Is that correct?
I anticipate needing one, yes.
We are gonna need a day next week for ABM to do a presentation. They requested Thursday next week to do that.
I can have my stuff prepared.
Okay. Mike.
I saw where the ABM money, bond money had been deposited.
Yes.
The street paving money, have we received that? How's that work?
Yes, that's deposited. Also, we have received both bonds. And they're broken down separately. I think one is Fund 50 and one's 51, something like that.
Okay.
So that's also on the financials.
And one last thing, and I hate to be so disjunct about things, but seems that's the way I am today. The bike trail, is that all finished and we've been compensated for that?
Yes. That project is complete, fully audited, and that's what I can say about that. It's a done, fully audited.
How long do you need finance, John? 30 minutes or 30 minutes?
Or less.
Or 15? I hear you said 15.
I can get my part done in 15 minutes if there's questions.
Okay, you read 30. All right.
I don't think I'll need that. I think it's about a good thing that I'm needing actually.
Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Sam.
I just got a couple of updates. So we have the Ironton Water Asset Management Plan that we provided through RCAP available on the website. There's executive summary, and then we've got the detailed analysis available. So if you go into irontonohio.org, click on City Departments, go to Public Works, you'll find it as you scroll down the page. There's an option to review that. August 12, council meeting, Kevin Wood will be here to give quarterly update. August 26, meeting, we will have Bill Dinkus for Jeremy Clay, LA DC, here to give an economic development quarterly update. Since our next meeting is also until the 12, an update for September. There's a couple of events going on downtown and on the riverfront on September 11. So you have the Ohio Revival Music Festival will be happening that day and that evening. There'll also be an event for 20-year memorial type come together event around the farm on that day and evening. So that's all updates I have.
How'd the cleanup go? Did you, I didn't read it in the last minutes. Did you give them any kind of update on how the turnout or?
Yeah, it went well. Pretty smooth.
Okay.
A lot of people showed up. We're still hoping to do one in the fall. I'm actually meeting with the judge tomorrow because he's wanting to try and do something well out in the community to see what we can do with that.
Actually, thought about it, 'cause on my way to work today, I passed the city of Ashland. Garbage truck picking up a couch in an alley. Anyway, I was thinking about their tonnage.
In their garbage truck?
In the garbage truck, yes.
Well, I'm gonna buy one for them.
Yep. Nate.
Do you have those numbers back, John? Was that in budget? Do you think there would need more money?
I think that the first one was within budget. I do not have those numbers, and I did not look for them today, and I should have.
Could you send that out just to see if we're gonna do one in the fall? If there's a, that would probably give a good estimate, right?
Yes. Yes.
And I think if the judge has some good ideas to, might get one.
Okay. Good.
Mayor.
Yes.
I had some folks talk to me. It's been over a year since they asked for the alley. It's Fourth Street, the 2000 block, North Fourth Street, 2000 block in front of the old state pool. Asked for the alley to be graded, and they've been waiting a year and it hasn't happened. They were wondering if that could get accomplished. Mostly, it's garbage trucks that runs through there, and they've dug deep ruts. People have a hard time maneuvering, getting their cars in their garage down there.
Yeah, I'll check on that. If you haven't called me, I don't mean, I don't remember, but.
Also, personally, I would like to have John take a look at, there's a house on the 2200 block. If he drives in the alley, the weeds are enormous, and there's a tree down as well. Last year, there was a problem with snakes there, and I can only anticipate that's going to happen again.
Down in Fort Bel Air?
Yeah, same, same area. I walk down that way, and folks tend to, hey, Mike, you know, and talk to me on that. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have communications, there are none. Reports, there are none. Ordinances, there are none. Nate.
Greg, I'd like to make a motion to take from the table, ordinance 2135.
I'll say it.
Thanks, Mike. Roll call please.
Cleary. Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Pop.
Aye.
Klein. Aye.
Peters.
That's already had third reading, so it doesn't need another reading, correct, Mike? Discussion. Nate.
Just kinda wanna, first I wanna thank the mayor for putting the RCAP report on our website to show, says, and if this were to pass, what those funds would be dedicated to. And just a high-level summary would be to fulfill some unfunded EPA federal mandates for water lines and valves, and to sustain operations, to bring quality water, and to improve water lines in our city, which I think is much needed. I think they've outlined very well, RCAP, the investment that needs to be made for us to continue to provide quality water to our residents. So I am in support of ordinance 2135. I think it's much needed. Overall, the fund right now, we've had to borrow over $100,000 from the general fund just to sustain operations. And we cannot continue to operate by borrowing money. So I think this ordinance is much needed.
Bob.
Probably as most of you know, I'm not in support of this ordinance. I would like to ask Nate, you said over $100,000. Are you adding 2020 to 80,000 there? Which is actually, which is actually 2019, that carried over into 2020, 80,000. And I presume you're using the 30,000 that projected right now for 2021, if they come up with that.
Which, Bob, that leaves us at, and we're at a zero balance pretty much right now.
Well, you know, I think we've still got some time to go. What I've researched and found is that the Pickle Water's spending more money with us, and I'm not so sure that 30,000 is just a projected number this year. So I wouldn't include that. I did some study on this thing, best I could do on it, and it was, I based a 4,000 gallon utility bill, 4,000 gallons. And if this thing passes the way it is, we're gonna have a $9.36 increase immediately for the, for this next billing cycle, I guess, once this goes into effect. And I have always, all the years I've been here, supported increases in any, any of the funds of water, sewer, whatever. The air price funds have to be kept. They have to make their own, pay their own way. But I think that what we're looking at here for a 10-year process is that everybody's gonna take a hit when this thing passes, if it does, of almost 10 bucks. If you're using 4,000, now if you're using 6, it's gonna be more. If you're using 2,000 or 1,000, it'll be a lot less. But I would be in support of increasing the water bill, but not with the scale that we have here. I'm thinking maybe if we could look and take another look at it, and maybe just increase it like $2 a month, or $2 a year for a 10-year average, would come out close to the same amount. Citizens wouldn't have to pay this first bill $10 on this year, on this year. So, you know, I just, I know we, like I said, we have to meet on air price funds, but we don't need $9 to make the ends meet. We only really need just a couple dollars. So I would not support the way it is for those reasons that I think a lot of Ironton citizens have had a lot of difficulty with the COVID and with paying their bills. And I just don't feel right in my mind that $2 would take care of the problem. And add it every year for the next 10 years, another $2, another $2. That'd be a whole lot easier to afford to do that. When I look at the chart, it's like 2022, you got $1.83, and then 2023 is $1.16. And it runs right around the $1 to $2 increase every year. And to me, that would be a whole lot easier for the citizens to pay than starting out with a $9 increase, which is only the water and sewer. You've still got the other, the trash and everything else that's on that water bill that you gotta pay. Over, over the 10 years, you're going from $28 to $49, which if you did $2 a year, it's the same thing. You're still gonna be able to have 49. It'd just be a whole lot easier, I think, for the citizens, and it would keep, it would keep the budget in balance for every one of those years coming through there. So that's kind of my feel on it, and I'm only one vote, but the way it stands. But the way it stands, I will not support it, but I would support some kind of an increase. So, yeah, I just, my take on it. That's where I'm at on it.
Nate?
Just a couple of things with that, Bob. First of all, that thirty thousand dollars, that is, has already gone through. That is, we have already borrowed that from the general fund, because that was used in the last budget amendment for a, for a severance for somebody that was leaving. We didn't have it, because we had not enough money to pay that out even. We're less than a thousand dollars' balance in our, in our fund, so it's very difficult for us to even operate on that. And there's the other thing I'd like to say on that. I understand your concerns, because I, I mean, I understand, yes, people are in different positions financially. But we, I think when we went into this, we, we solicited RCAP for two reasons to do this study. One, the EPA pretty much has mandated us to do that. And two, we saw the benefit of having a independent party outside of people that are sitting here and people that are working for the city to evaluate where our rates need to be to accomplish these things. So we brought in the so-called experts to, to evaluate that, independent from, you know, saying, man, you know, I just wanna raise it this, or it needs to be twenty dollars to find the actual, what it needs to be. So I'm gonna trust the experts as far as where it needs to be. I'm gonna rely on them. We, we as a city invest in money for that opinion, and I think, I think it's valuable. And that's all I have on, on this ordinance, my last.
Chris?
Yeah, I was just listening to both sides of this, and, you know, I was under the impression that we were still looking into not tying stormwater into the potable water structure, pay structure. Also, I thought we were going to look into some of the other fees that we deemed unnecessary or extreme. And, you know, without adjusting any of the other fees or tying stormwater, untying stormwater with potable water, I just, I think we can do better than, than what is proposed. I'd like to take a longer look at it. Like Bob said, maybe adjust some of the, adjust some of the fee structure that we currently have, and also take a longer look, because I think what Bob was, was using as reference, they had us going over the per dollar, I think it was like one point something. And the guy from RCAP said that, you know, that is over what the income base is. I forget the exact number. Do you remember that conversation?
It was the affordability.
Affordability index, exactly.
You don't qualify for grants until you reach one-point-five, and we're at point nine right now.
I think we were over that, so.
We're at point nine.
Without, without looking into some of the other stuff, I can't, I would, you know, I was willing to take a longer look at everything, and I think that we met one time on it, talking about stormwater. I think that's all the further to learn, so.
I'm, I'm, I've been out of town for two weeks, Chris, but I told you, I'm firmly committed to analyzing all the other fees. But just clarification, this doesn't affect, this doesn't affect the stormwater rates.
It doesn't.
As is, but I, I a hundred percent agree with you that it's, it's always been asinine to tie potable water with stormwater. And so I'm, we're in full agreement. I just don't want us to have an independent party, RCAP, come in and tell us, this is what your future looks like, this is what your future could look like, this is what you all need to do, based on our expert opinion, to invest in your infrastructure, to get it right, to make sure your fund's healthy. And ironically enough, where Bob has always been a yes on enterprise fund increases, I've always been a no for a lot of the same reasons that you're saying. But the reason that I, that I support this time is because this is getting it right. Instead of throwing a dollar at it, or throwing two dollars at it, and taking a educated guess, we're actually following guidance from people that, that get paid to do this. And, and not only take a look at our bottom line, which is what we've always done. We've always been reactive and take a look at our bottom line, oh shit, we're in the red. We need to raise it two dollars, so we can get it in the black. And, and all the meanwhile, our pipes under the ground go unaddressed, our infrastructure goes unaddressed. And, and I like the plan of being, one, proactive and not reactive, and, and two, investing in our infrastructure, because God knows it's not getting any younger. So I've, I've said all that stuff before. I don't wanna belabor all that, so. Bob?
Yeah, what I wanted to mention is when you start talking about looking at the other fees, I remember vividly that we talked about the economic development. I mean, if we're gonna, if we're gonna take this at nine dollars, we would eliminate that. I think it was five to five.
Two-fifty.
Two-fifty.
Dollar-fifty.
Yeah. And you know, as far as the experts bring back these numbers, I recall John Edel talking about his numbers that you ran, correct me if I'm wrong, was on those round part of the theme. And so their expertise just strengthens what we do internally anyway. But, you know, I'm just going to hold it strong. I'm not gonna support it. And I would support something, you know, but I think it needs to be further looked at through, we cut the cost.
Chris?
I, I agree with Bob. My thing is, instead of just fixing one part of the utility bill, I wanna, you know, because we fixed this part, then that gets pushed aside, I'd like to take a deep look into the entire thing and fix the whole thing. If we're gonna do one section, we may as well be all inclusive. I mean, I'm willing to compromise. I said that in meetings, willing to compromise, but we're not deciding, you know, trying to work out lowering some fees isn't getting anything from the side that's, that's wanting to increase the fee. And that's, I'm just looking for a compromise.
I don't think there has to be one way or the other. I fully agree with you. So if you're willing to sponsor something, to take economic development fee off there, or, or rearrange the storm utility, you know I'm all for it, because I gave you all the work I did on it. So, so you're, you're preaching to the choir, but I, but I don't want that to stand in the way of this. That's been my take on it. Mike?
Just so I'm clear, Bob, when you're talking about nine-dollar increase, you're talking about the overall increase of the utility bill. We're actually increasing the water rate from six-forty-four per thousand gallons to seven-forty-nine per thousand gallons. Right?
You know, I don't have it written down that way. I just.
You were talking about four thousand gallons.
Yeah, if you had four thousand gallons usage, then it would be nine-thirty-six.
It's, it's.
Two dollars. But if you only use one thousand, then it's gonna be a whole lot less. I would, I would guess there are very, very, very few one-thousand gallon accounts in our.
Mike, it just.
I think, normally I think they're like, because the average three to four thousand.
It was three and a half. RCAP told us it was three and a half, and, and one of my problems was, was, did, are you rounding up or rounding down?
Yeah.
That was one.
Exactly. Eight to four thousand on mine.
But, yeah, it says eight-seventy-six, but then next year it's forty cents.
Eight, eight-seventy-six from six-forty-four, and water admin from two-fifty to two-fifty-eight, so eight cents.
And, and then years to come, it's like a twenty to thirty cent increase. Instead of two dollars per year.
I agree with most of what you said. The only thing is adding a dollar or two every year for the next few years. If something catastrophic happens, or we need critical infrastructure, we don't have the money to deal with it. We're gonna have to borrow from the general fund.
The only thing I can address with that, Mike, is that we have, you know how long I've been setting up here, in years? And we've had issues in the past where, I mean, I can't pull one up and tell you what it was. But it seems like anytime we get into catastrophic situation, that there's always funding out there for. There's, there's zero percent OWDA money a lot of times to help communities. There's, there's grant money, there's stuff that we can, we've never, we have never, in all my years, ever created a danger area for the citizens in Ironton, never. We always find a way to do it. And I feel like at this point, if we, if we have, I keep that this two-dollar deal. If we do that, well then, there might be something catastrophic, but there may not either, because if we hire water plant people here, they can probably tell the problem we've had and how we've dealt with it. But, you know, the charge, charge residents, money to put in the bank in case there's some, you say thing with catastrophic event, and we say, oh, John, how much money you got in this account? Oh, you got a hundred thousand? Well, we'll spend that. I mean, to me, we tackle the, the problems that do occur. It's, I, I don't like to have an account run dry or go totally, I've never the red. You can't do it on air price funds. But I also like maintaining balance. I think that's what, well, as a council member, we are, are charged to do is to keep the enterprise fund from going in the red. And that's why, like Greg said, I have never, in all my years, ever voted against a raise in, in any enterprise fund that wasn't, you know, wasn't desperately needed. And just like when Nate was talking about our thirty thousand dollars in the red, well, that's today. John has told us in another meeting that if the water didn't work, you, I forget the term you used at the podium, I've kinda been concerned because things are doing better now than what we projected. And you're in, I'm not reading your mind. I feel like we're thinking, what if? What if this is the last one for heck of dividing water off us? Or what if, I mean, but you can't, you can't base your life on the what-ifs. I mean, I don't want to be in the red, but I'll do something to take it out of it. But I just don't, I just don't like the terms of what we're presenting.
Nate?
I'm gonna make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-one thirty-five.
Second.
Mike? Thank you. Roll call.
Cleary.
No.
Haney.
No.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawke.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-one thirty-five is adopted. Next, we have resolutions. There are none miscellaneous. I would like to call a planning commission meeting for, of the city of Ironton for five-thirty, next Thursday, seven-twenty-nine. Nate? Since that involves the ordinance you sponsored, I mean, I could speak to it, but if you'd like to be there, I'd like for you to be there about the family zoning.
Okay. What time you said start was on that?
Five-thirty.
Five-thirty, okay.
And then a finance committee meeting to follow at five-forty-five for budget amendment. And then a special meeting at six o'clock for three purposes. One, the budget amendment. Two, a proclamation for the Ironton National Little League, Junior League State Champions, who also won the state championship. And three, for ABM presentation. They specifically requested next Thursday as the date to come and present to us. So that's why I'd just like to tackle those three things and get those over with. So again, planning commission, five-thirty, June, or July twenty-ninth. Finance committee, five-forty-five, July twenty-ninth. Special meeting for sole purposes of the budget amendment, proclamation for Ironton Junior League State Champions, and ABM presentation. Mike?
I'm making a motion. We go to executive session to discuss litigation and personnel. I'll need counsel, solicitor, John, and mayor.
Can you retract that for just a second? We got financials to receive. Nate?
I'd like to make a motion to accept and make part of the meds, the June twenty-one financials.
I'll second. Roll call.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawke.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Was there any other miscellaneous for Mike? Okay, Mike, go ahead.
Making a motion, we go to executive session to discuss litigation and personnel. I'd like counsel, solicitor, John, and mayor.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawke.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Thank y'all. Terry? Can you, can you get ahold of Elaine, Elaine, Joe, and Jody, and let them know five-thirty next Thursday? Would you do, do you have, I mean, I, I have Joe's contact information, but not.